I'm calling the meeting order now. If you would mind please stand for communication and related to this person. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of these that are here. All of these public servants, whether elected or whether just interested citizens, Lord, we thank you for each and every one. Oh, Lord, we pray that we work your will. We are all of the same mind, Father, in that we want to build a community that is pleasing on your side. Grant us your wisdom and your grace so that we can do Christ precious things.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotable. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Are there citizen's communications? Well, I have only one. Mr. Tom Murphy, you told me you didn't know what you wanted to say.
I was saying, okay.
Thanks. All right. And so those are all the citizen's communications. Can we move on with the regular agenda? And there are two. Item five would be public hearing. We have a public hearing. So we'll move on with the regular agenda. This is all a non-consent agenda. And item number six is consider and take any action necessary regarding the passage of an amendment to the Employee Services Agreement by and between the City of Dan Alstine and the Dan Alstine Economic Development Corporation. Now, in my reading, let's see, no, we do have a draft of an amendment, but the EDC president is still going to want to review it and sign it. We don't have his signature yet.
A meeting Friday.
A meeting Friday. Okay, so can we leave the table, Viz? All right. Okay, but it won't go into effect until it's signed.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any discussion, any questions among council? Seeing no hand, is there a motion?
I make motion to approve of item stated that changes the way the EDC and the city and the city and all the employee issues.
My brief understanding is that what we're doing here, actually, the director of the EDCs had more or less had two bosses. She had to be the president of the EDC and also the city manager. We're changing that so that she only has one boss and that would be the president of the EDC. So that's generally what this is about. Is there a second to bill of motion?
A second.
All right. Robert Jasko seconds. Any discussion or questions once again among council? Seeing no hand, all in favor? All right, it is unanimous, so motion passed. Item number seven, consider and take any action necessary regarding the passage of an ordinance amended amending the City of Dan Alstine's code ordinances, section two, act 183, city fee schedule adopted regarding fire conventions and fire protection fees. And now there's a later item here, item number nine. Actually, if we pass that, then we can pass item number seven. So I suppose we should wait until we cover item nine or should we go ahead and do that?
No, sir. Go ahead and do that. It seems adequate to mention what Veritas does.
All right. We have a proposal from Veritas. And sir, did you want to talk to this?
I'm more than willing to talk if council or anybody has any questions to talk about. We currently, we have had a fire service agreement with the City of Dan Alstine since 2010. We've been doing our building inspections since about 2007. But it's kind of been an agreement where if they need us, they'll call us. If they want their inspection, we should do it, they'll do it. But we've had a fire sprinkler, fire alarm due to construction contract, but my understanding is now that we're looking at increasing that to annual inspections, fire COs. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Yeah, that'll be number nine. What we're looking at right now, Ty, is the fee schedule. And what council received was there were two pages in yellow that follow the fee schedule established by Veritas. With the exception of, there were three things that were overlooked, and one was the pellet display permit. Instead of being 25, it would be 125 to follow those fees. And then fireworks, fire techniques inspection would be 300. And then any tent membrane structure, whether it's a smaller individual or one large tent, would all be under 17250 per hour. So they fall under an hourly inspection timeframe versus just the flat fee.
Sure. And I would like to add to that. If this is passed by our fire sprinkler, fire alarm fee schedules that were in place in 2010, now that we have increased our staff and we have, I've got one of our fire inspectors here with us tonight, if you notice, it's actually cheaper than what it was in 2010. So our rates have reduced on the new inspection stuff, the fire sprinkler, fire alarm. So it's actually cheaper than what it was back in February.
And what we're doing here, and so I am speaking to item number nine, which is coming up in a little while, but generally, we had our alum fire attendants.
Yes, sir.
Doing the fire inspections, but thinking that they have more than enough to do, sometimes they're short on availability. You do so many of our other inspections, we're just going to let you handle those two.
We're glad that they all fan. And just so you know, that's a common practice. We're, unfortunately for cities, we're coming across that right now. You know, the fire guys have got way too much on their plate, so we're getting a lot more work for that reason. So don't feel like you're alone there.
All right, so thank you very much. All right. So any questions?
What would be the effective date?
These are due. Is that Roger?
Yes, the draft of the ordinance just has the date the ordinance is approved as the effective date.
Question, you didn't mention the tents charge.
Yes.
What kind of tents? I mean, that doesn't mean like when they have a, the fall roll that they, every other place that has a tent with them?
Yes, sir.
That's a total of hundred?
No, not individual. So it's by the hour. So what we've done with working with the change on fall roll is the tents that have been within the event is we did it where we charged, ten membrane structure, we're charging $50 each for 225 square feet or less. And for a large tent like the Lord's Acre Harvest Festival over at Methodist Church, we're charging 150 to inspect that big circus style tent. So, well, one circus style, but an event tent. So what this does is with Veritas's inspections, it takes it to an hourly charge, and there's a one hour minimum, but it's 17250 per hour. So it doesn't matter if it's all the tents at fall roll or one big tent, it'll be 17250 initially. If it takes more than an hour for them to go through and inspect all the tents at fall roll, then it'd be an additional charge.
That's some unusual thing that's what most places have?
No, sir, because you have to have liability covered. You can notice that 10 by 10 tent, when you cluster them, you have the ability to create a conflagration opportunity. And we value our whole downtown. We don't want anything to happen. So this is that third party inspection to make sure that, you know, we're safe and operating effectively.
Do we, you saw, I mean, like I noticed on here, there's one for animal control and stuff like that. Do we actually do that?
That's going to be a Steve question, I believe that's a yes.
Yes. Where it says animal recovery fees, that just means they get their dog, if they, if we have their dog and we give it back to them, then?
If we pick it up and take it to Sherman, then it's the $90.
On one Friday, 15?
The reason we put animal, reason we put animal recovery is because we have to pay $50 to Sherman Animal Control to drop it off.
Okay.
And plus the time for us to drive up and back.
But if the dog is still here, is there a difference then?
No, if we pick it up, it's better.
It's still charging $50?
No, it's $90.
$90.
$90. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Whenever we get a full time staff, I mean, animal control, then it's a little easier because we actually be controlling for the dog that's running loose.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the tent inspection thing, has that ever been charged before?
Yes, sir.
On a per 10 or a per hour basis?
It's been charged to Lord's Acre Harvest Festival and it's also been charged to fall roll because we have to provide the inspectors and they're not necessarily on shift when the event occurs.
Okay, I don't remember if they did.
Chamber should have paid the bill.
Well, I'm sure they did.
Okay.
I'm a trader, I just don't remember. Another question, have, our practice has been to shop bids on services and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Has this been shopped?
I don't know of anybody else that does this.
Okay.
Because are you familiar with another inspection firm?
Of course not, Frank.
No, no, I'm not, because I didn't know if you had somebody that?
No. I was just asking.
Okay. Are you aware of any type?
Not in the fire sector. There are a few other third party building inspection companies out there. But in the fire sector, that's kind of one of our specialties. Not many other people do.
When we get to nine, I'm going to talk more about the relationship and one of the reasons why we're doing this.
Okay. All right. Are there any more questions?
How quickly can the fee schedule be put on the website?
By the end of the week.
Who does that?
I do.
You do? Okay.
Does this mean the fire department won't, will this be replacing some of their inspections that they did?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll talk more about that when we get to nine.
Okay.
Any more questions? Is there a motion then to approve this city fee schedule?
I made a motion.
All right, we have a motion, so there's a second. All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands?
Well, wait a second, 20 seconds. You were saying before that the services that were provided have been done by the fire department before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the bill was being paid to the city?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. We have three in favor, all opposed, one opposed, so the motion carries. That was item number seven. Moving on to eight, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 787 in order to change the effective date of the 2015 International Fire Code to January 1st of 2018, with the exception of code items related to energy as required by state law. And I have a question, Julia.
Yes, sir.
And so I looked through what we had, the amendments to the International Fire Code, the latest ones from 2015. And I didn't find a spot where it discussed energy related law. Now, there is a separate code, and we're not proposing to push the date, the effective date of that one out. It remains as is. But there is an energy conservation code that's in effect right now. But within the fire code, are there other items that are energy related or are they just two completely separate codes?
I am not familiar with all of the technical requirements of the fire code. I can tell you that I've been told by other building inspectors, and Ty may be more qualified to speak on this, that there is the energy code, but also just like the electrical code, you know, there are many codes, like eight or nine different ones that the city has adopted, that many of those other ones have items that relate to energy or would help with energy conservation. They're not all just in the energy code. Whether or not some of those are in the fire code, I couldn't say with any certainty.
Mr. Chapman, would you know a long?
Yes, sir. Basically, the CECO, the State Energy Conservation Organization Department, or whatever they are, they had a Senate bill passed that basically said, you know, effective September the first of 2016, that it was mandatory law that all municipalities require the 2015, or adopt the 2015 energy code. Pretty much all the cities in our surrounding community, Anna Melissa, Howe, Tom Bean, Dan Alstine, White Rock, have adopted it. Enforcement is sporadic, but everybody wants to comply with what the state says. So the energy deal is set in stone. Stone Hollow that we're expecting down here, pretty much everybody is already working towards that, that's not an issue. As far as the fire code, no, there's nothing in the fire code that is going to address any energy. There is, you know, TDR, which governs the National Electrical Code, you know, has slid effective September 1st. You know, everybody shall adopt the 2014 National Electrical Code, which there are provisions in that for lighting, various other things. So there is a couple of codes that go hand in hand, but the energy for the most part is kind of standalone. But that's not an issue. I mean, the 2012 code required mandatory testing. All of the builders that we're dealing with up here, it's a non-issue. They have to have their blower to work on plaster testing. We provide documentation, you know, to the city that these houses are being built to or above standards of the 2015 energy code. So as far as energy goes, you know, yes, it's a state law. We're doing it. Nobody's fussing about it, by knowledge, unless y'all were getting any complaints about it. But, you know, we've had builders for the last few years, and typically, if they know something's coming down the pipeline, you know, their DR ordens, Stone Hollows, LGIs, whoever, they're going to ramp up and be ahead of the game. So it's not an issue, but as far as anything else goes, you know, plumbing, mechanical, building codes does not really go hand in hand with energy. It's kind of a standalone code, so.
So it's not likely to complicate things. What we're proposing here is until January 1st, when we do make the 2015 fire code effective, we'll be falling back to our 2009 code. But you don't see any?
No, no. And the 2009 code, I mean, well, first of all, in 2015, you've got some mandatory requirements for residential construction. Commercial, it's unchanged. 2009, there's a script embedded where they have the option of either doing the testing or myself and other inspectors that we have that are certified interview inspectors, we can go out there and inspect them for them. So code nine does give them a little wiggle room if, you know, they want to utilize our services and, you know, like we're, like we do as a one stop shop. Hey, I can inspect your energy before you ever do 09, but I can't under 15 because it hasn't been tested. So there is some wiggle room there between 09 and 15 in residential. It has no bearing whatsoever on commercial from an energy standpoint.
Any other questions, Mr. Chapman? Thank you, sir, once again. Any comments or questions among council regarding item number eight?
My question is related to, okay, we're going to that date. Are we putting anything in our little write-up thing that sort of gives them steps to follow? That says after this date, if, you know, after you've done this, then you're automatically locked into a certain, for a certain amount of time or something like that? So that if somebody comes in on, you know, right before the end of the year and decides they want to be locked into that code, they have to do something to get there? Is there anything like that?
We can do that. Whatever the council desires would be fine to add to the website and in the packets as far as whether it's just?
Is there something like that that's already sort of in effect? If they come with their plans or they do get, you know, the, you know, something asked?
If a permit is issued and then we operate under the codes that they were, the plans were reviewed under?
Okay.
That were in effect at that time, so.
Okay, so we just need to add some comment in there that says?
Permit must be issued before.
That means this, that you're locked into this code for, I mean, 90 days, six months? What would?
Once they get their permit, they're locked in. If they don't fulfill their permit and they have to re-permit a project, then it changes.
Okay.
Can I wait on that a minute?
Yeah.
We have dealt with this in a couple of local municipalities here recently. You know, with the 2015 changes, the biggest impact has come to the school districts with tornado shelter, tornado safe construction. What I have seen, I'm not telling you how to do your business or whatever, but what I've seen in our surrounding jurisdictions is, you know, if whoever is in the process of permitting, plan review, or, you know, going through, they come up and, you know, they bring Jennifer, you know, a set of plans and they say, you know, this is what we're going to do. It goes to our department for review. They have somewhat kind of vested rights into where we're starting the process.
Okay.
They have, by building code, they have 180 days. They issue a permit and, you know, if they start construction within 180 days, then they will fall under whatever you have adopted at that time. If they choose to drag their feet and go beyond that 180 days, then it's going to be up to the council or the municipality to say, well, you've adopted this new code, you didn't follow through in your six months, which I don't think you're ever going to see it happen. But that is, you know, what is addressed in the administrative portion of the code, which is 180 days. But what I've seen with a couple of school districts currently right now, and it goes beyond school districts to other various entities of the city, is if they're in the process, the cities have been, will let you go through this 09 code or whatever. If you drag your feet for six months, shame on you. Now you've got to go through the new process.
Okay.
Just to clarify that for you. Hopefully that answers your question.
Just to make sure y'all remember, when we adopted the 2015 codes, we amended that 180 days and shortened it to 90.
Okay, okay. Okay, so yeah, if that's been amended, then 90 days.
And Jennifer, I think something that Billy's speaking to gives notice to people because that's, our quick adoption of all these 2015 codes with only, with 30 days' notice caused some problems for folks. And I know that we've worked up or that you've been working up a cover sheet for applications of people who come in and pick up packets for a new building or something like that. And if that could be noted on those, then that would help our notice requirement. I've even had it suggested that we put something on the window of the clerk's windows to let people know. I mean, the more notice, the better, I think.
To banner, yeah. I agree, adding that language from the ordinance to the forms and the website and just doing our due diligence and making sure people are aware that when they pick up that packet, that may not be the end all be all. And if they don't get all of their stuff into us, then they could be operating under different codes if they wait too long. So, but having that, the 2015 International Fire Code becoming effective January 1st of 2018, go ahead and adding that to the packet. So we identify that we're still operating, still operating under the 2009, but giving that advanced warning that as of January 1st, you'll have to comply with 2015.
Or 90 days.
Makes sense to me.
Or 90 days. I come in December and get my, then I get 90 days.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Questions?
I've got a question. Why, I guess I've overlooked the 100 day to 90 day change. Why would we go 90 days if it's the state committed? I'm asking Frank about this. Well, okay, why would we do that? What is the advantage of doing that?
To encourage people to get to work when they pull a permit. If you pull a demolition permit and you're on safe structure that's wide open to the public and for children to come in and out of, that was the initial drive, was people would pull a demolition permit and they would sit on it and they had 180 days, so they had six months. And then it would expire and still nothing was done. And maybe they would come in and reapply for a new permit. And we kind of felt like we should give them the opportunity for their, to do the work before the city took any action on their structure.
So are these both in the same document?
Mm-hmm, yes.
One about demolition and?
Look, the permit, whether you're building or demolishing, if you get the permit, the permit, if it's 90 days, the permit expires after 90 days if you haven't started building or haven't started demolishing. So all you have to do is start the work and then the permit remains in effect until you, as long as you're continuing to work until you complete it. But if you get a permit and you don't use it or start the work, then 90 days later, it expires and you would have to get a new one.
So the thing, well, there's a little overlap in some of the things that we had talked about. If you receive a permit, right now we have 90 days for you to start whatever that permit is for. Or you have to reapply. Which, if you had received a permit in December, December 31st, and you didn't start for 90 days, now you've gone from the 2009 code to, they've got to redo it to the 2015 code. The overlap I'm seeing is when somebody starts the application process, if they start the application process on December, in December, but we all know the application process in getting a permit is not an overnight process. What code are they going, do they need to be applying under if they're applying in December, but the code's fixing to change January 1st?
Well, you do, there is a thing called besting your grandfather, which is what Ty was alluding to, which once you have a complete application on file, then the date of your complete application is the date that you best in the rules in place on that date. However, it's chapter 245 of the local government code is the chapter on permitting that talks about this. There are certain things that that rule does not apply to. And if it relates to life safety, there's a whole list. If the permit is for building codes, there's a list of things where that rule doesn't apply. So it would depend what had changed, whether it was on the list or not on the list, whether their grandfather had bested it or not.
So it can still become convoluted mess?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what, especially when there's code changes like this, the communication with the app- with the applicants, you know, obviously, one of the things that we have with this situation was a, an emergency code change to meet state law, which inadvertently, you know, because of that, didn't think through some of the pieces to it. But regardless of that, we still, you know, mainly because the state does require these mandatory changes, whether we never changed anything at all, the state does require for changes, we're still going to encounter these situations and that a communication process with all known applicants that helps them to understand where they sit in the process and their risks. I think with the people that we've talked to is the risk seems to be what a lot of them didn't understand. And I know it's, maybe that's something that we as a council need to think through and to help guide you guys to come up with a way for communication with citizens and the applicants, especially within any timeframe that's known or, you know, been established. So, applicants can kind of know where they stand. And some of those risks may have to be, you know, having Veritas involved in establishing where some of those lines of risk are. Especially we get closer and closer to December, there's going to be people that are coming in with applications and whatnot that they're probably going to want to know, okay, I don't get my permit until 20, sometime in 2018. What are my risks? What kind of things am I, do I need to go ahead and start looking at now? Does that make sense? I think thinking proactively in that direction's going to help.
But didn't she say that, you didn't say that when they applied for the permit, as long as they...
It's got to be a complete application.
As long as they do it.
They can't give...
But there's pieces of it, like she just said, there's pieces of it that don't...
Don't allow the grandfather.
Just from my experience, I've encountered some of these situations where I got a permit after a code change and it's, there wasn't anything they could do about it. And my company ended up paying the firm. I mean, it was, it was what it was. But it's, and it was a very, it was a first go. And it's a baby that does it every day. But it's communication, it's best communication we can get. I don't know that we can be perfect at it, but whatever we can come up with to help the process.
I think that the cover sheet, it's pretty much a checkoff list that they've been working on. And I hope they've got an email. And I think that's a good start so that you can have those discussions when you're going to apply. So that you can let them know just what they need to do and what codes, where they're going to get their work. So, I think that's a, that's a good start. And...
Did I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I would be willing to do, and we've done in the past right here in this room, right now, you know, we get towards December, this board's got a valid concern. We'll, you know, the intent of code changes is not to catch everybody off guard. One thing we will do as part of our service to the city is, you know, September, October, you know, you want to give people 60 days notice or whatever, we will be more than happy if y'all want to facilitate a builder's meeting or whatever, man, I would be more than happy to come up here and do a presentation for them as far as, okay, here's some of the things you're going to see differently, here's what you're going to be expected to do, here's the difference between O nine and 15. So, you know, y'all want to keep that in mind. I've done it before up here, I do it all the municipalities we work for. So, you know, our goal is to try to help educate these people and take them off guard.
That would be great. And I think the last item, the last question that's on the questionnaire, the checkoff list that you're making up is the question, do you want to have a meeting? I think it refers to city staff, though, if we include you on that.
Sure. Good to hear.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
I've got another question. I do recall going from the 180 to the 90 as far as demolition was brought up. In that construction, demolition, two different things. Yes, we would want the demolition to get done quickly, but as you was talking about, if you pull your permit in October, which is start of bad weather, and you're not able to finish everything required for your permit in a six-month period, why wouldn't we give them 180 days instead of 90? Because if you're going from October to January, you may not get your, whatever it is.
It's not completion, it's beginning of construction.
Right, you just have to start, you don't have to finish.
Oh, you don't have...
You'd have to get your project done.
You just have to keep where you started.
Just like palladium.
You go back out and do some work, then you have to go.
Like use palladium for the example, like even it was 180 days, I assume, when they got their permit. That doesn't mean they have to build the entire apartment complex within 180 days, but they did have to start the construction within 180 days.
Most of them don't pay for any chemical permit until they're ready to get their lumber package and get their concrete, work their forms. A lot of them come and put their forms up and then pull it and then tie it. I mean, it's kind of a, tag their forms up and here's a permit or something. So, it's, I mean, a lot of them have their ducks in a row before they ever pulled the permit with us. And some jumped the gun and they don't care how many weigh in, they're just trying to work around what's been done, make sure it's been consistently correct. Yeah, it's not a race to finish in 90 days, it's just getting started.
I ask to, item number eight, is there a motion to move this effective date up to January 1st, 2018, for the adoption of the, for the effective date of 2015 International Fire Code? We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Is there any more discussion, further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Is unanimous, and so the motion passes. Item number nine, we've discussed some already, considering taking action regarding an amendment to professional services meant by and between the city of Van Alstine and Bureau Veritas North America, corporately, to allow an increase in the professional fees charged for fire plan review and inspection services. Is there any more discussion on this side? We've approved a fee schedule already. How much do we talk about?
Just like... It was tremendous, which made the, the fee schedule was actually worth a lot of time and use to charge. So, there was some value in us doing it with on-shift personnel because we didn't schedule things for inspection or plan review unless the guys were on shift to not incur overtime. And so, there was some value and some savings there as far as the fees were concerned. However, what we're running up against is time is more of a factor and saving a few dollars in us getting projects moving forward as far as plan review and as far as inspection. So, discussing this with time, their capacity is increased and it's created two benefits in their capacity to build, do plan review concurrently with what they're doing for electrical, building, everything else, whenever the plans go in, so they don't come back and wait for one of our plan reviewers to look at them while they're on shift. And it's also their fees have been lowered because they've added their capacity to be able to take care of this, not just for us, but for the municipalities as far as inspection is concerned. So, the fee change is not short, but I don't have, that's a good question, but I don't have what it was before. This is, the main effort is to consolidate the timeframe for getting the plan review, taking care of it back to the applicant for comments and revisions, as well as the inspection being done within 24 hours versus a 72-hour window. And I know that that doesn't seem like a whole lot, but in the interest of trying to get things accomplished and us moving forward, as well as the increased call demand on our personnel, this is, this is what's being recommended and suggested for us. So, I know you got a question.
What more? It's kind of long lines of what you're saying. It kind of seems to me to be a little bit of cost savings for the city, as well as it expedites the permitting processes. I know some folks that have been working for these inspections to make it a little less, so it seems like it kind of expedited that a little bit, so we can start opening up the doors and get everybody ready for themselves.
That's true. And this, you know, it might be falling back on what Robert's concern was about taking revenue away from the fire department and doing these inspections. That is the case. I mean, we budgeted $1,500 for inspection review for this fiscal year. We've met that goal. It's not a, in a $7.2 million budget, it's not exorbitant, but the pennies count. So, this is, it's, it's just an effort to, you know, and the concerns about getting plans back to people, getting them, having some consistency and saving quite a bit of time, I mean, days. This is why the recommendations being made. We do have, we do have oversights and we do have the ability, if we do have a prevention office in the future, we do have, and have somebody on daily, 40 hours a week, we do have the ability to do it ourselves. But right now, the recommendation's to where getting off the guys' plate that are on shift and let's shorten the timeline. And the guys are, you know, Veritas is going to be doing same or similar review to what the guys on shift would be doing, but there's more availability there. And so, what we talked about internally is whenever, whenever the permit is issued from the CO, we're sending out a copy of the CO permit to lieutenants on shift. So, that way they have the ability with their crews to go in, walk through the facility, depending on the size of the occupancy, just to make sure they've got a good idea of the layout, sure there'd be an event there, they need to know where, why and how, how to get around. So, it's, it's not really trying to take money out of, out of the fire department's pockets, it's mainly trying to, trying to help everybody out. Trying to help you all out as far as complaints, helping the fire department guys as far as shift and taking your calls and focusing on EMS and fire and Veritas as far as consistency and conduct and as far as the plans and inspections. This does include the annual inspections, which has been something that we've had difficulty in doing with our shift personnel due to time constraints. So, Veritas will be able to do that and take care of it and take records for us as well, which is terrific.
So, I ask to item nine, is there any further discussion? I would entertain a motion to allow an increase in professional fees for, charged for fire plan review and inspection services in the agreement between the city and Bureau Veritas. Another motion, five, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Is unanimous, and so the motion carries. Item number 10, everybody's favorite item, we have the opportunity to adjourn here, and I'll ask for a motion. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second, all in favor? We are adjourned, and the time is 7:19 P. M. Thanks, everyone.